So this is what I was doing. It's like, I'm hoping this is really moving. So you just get rid of five or six. So why don't we begin? I don't know. I mean, I can't see it. It's not on the table. It's really not. Because I have to actually break these in pretty big pieces. I don't know. I just switch it in and then switch it back to that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, so this is a good start. I'm gonna change it. Scott, can I spread your shirt on? Can I see my eyes? All right. Good evening. In response to the executive order issued by the Governor of the State of California, the College Special Meeting with the Board of Education at the Denver County School District will be conducted in person following all current health regulations in effect at the time of the meeting. 1.1 calls for order of governing Board of Trustees special meeting. I would like to call to order the August 4th, 2022 governing Board of Trustees special meeting at 7:30 PM. 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Is our motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second?
Awesome.
Thank you all in favor. Our item closed. Okay, motion to approve as you asked. 3.1 is hearing from the public regarding items on the agenda. Is there any public input regarding items on the agenda?
Sorry.
Yes.
I was just not able to push that, I guess.
Okay, nice, nice. All right. And so, yeah, we're right ahead. Yeah.
All right. I was hopeful that we have some kindergarten teachers here tonight. I did reach out to the Board because I felt it was important when we passed him. But my opinions from the stakeholders will be those affected by decisions made. A lot of feedback I got was, I'm not a toy, can't make it. And so, apparently not many people could make it. I did get some emails of responding to it, trying to get your opinions. But I will say, just from my position of what I've heard so far, especially to be a voice of reason on the timing of things and considering the impact on all stakeholders, my understanding of that on my parents of not having full day kindergarten all year round, but also understanding the impact of bringing something like this to happen at the very start of the school year with the week to be before teachers begin and they've already planned and prepared for what's going to happen starting next week. I also appreciate the input teachers might be able to have in these solutions and how this might work. I think in such a short notice it would be typical for teachers to have the proper type of input and making sure a solution worked for everybody. There's definitely not one size fits all of the solutions to accommodate for teachers still to be able to give the attention they want to students in their assessments and basically make it best for students' camp here or something. So, again, just trying to be the voice of reason and timing and hoping that a solution can be made that will consider the impact on everybody and if it takes a little while longer to get to that solution, in fact, it worth it to make sure that it works through. So, 1.1, thanks.
Thank you. Other agenda members? Others? Okay. Thank you for that. We are at item 4.1, working for full day kindergarten, 180 days for every kindergarten student, Dr. McClure.
Good evening, board members. The topic being brought by, this topic brought forward tonight, full day kindergarten, 180 days for every kindergarten student, is brought forward by a board, it was actually brought forward by a board member at the July 27th board meeting, which was last Wednesday. And at that meeting, I was asked to follow up with board members regarding scheduling a special meeting to discuss the topic of full day kindergarten for every student beginning on the first day of school in 2022, which is this school year. So, we have this here before us tonight for that reason and which addresses the calling of this special board meeting. So more specifically, we've been asked if full day kindergarten can happen for the 2022 school year, beginning with all students on the first day of school, which is August 15th, 2022. And it was brought up at the meeting that there might be a way to cover the teachers' classrooms in the afternoon so they could be released to assess students. We were asked to consider possible options so that this could be put into place as quickly as possible. So specifically, this is about an option to provide every kindergarten student equitable access to a full day instruction for 180 days. As you may remember, our current kindergarten schedule has kindergarten students attend a minimum day schedule for the first six weeks of school. And then on the seventh week of school, they begin full day instruction for the remainder of the school year. The alternative schedule we explored provides a second certified teacher in every kindergarten classroom for the first six weeks of school, so the classroom teacher can be released to conduct one-on-one assessments with every student. So what steps did we take? As you know, as Dr. McClure mentioned, a board member requests for special board meeting for the purpose of discussing full day kindergarten every day, starting on the first day of school for the 22, 23 school year. Staff considered alternative plans to explore a possible shift to 180 days of full day kindergarten on a very short timeline. And kindergarten teachers were contacted for the purpose of getting their input about the alternative schedule presented this evening. As with any shift to 180 days and the alternate schedule we have proposed, there are some staffing and budget implications which I am willing to.
So for the upcoming school year, we have a total of 21 kindergarten classrooms. And so those 21 kindergarten classrooms would require, excuse me, 21 certificate teachers to support those classrooms all day, which would be 21 substitute teachers for the first six weeks of school. The total cost for supporting those 21 classrooms with substitutes for those days would be a total of $150,605. And the funding source that we would be able to tap into today for this would be the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant.
So, as we talked about, there is a, this would be a very short timeline. This is different than, you know, what was talked about briefly by Shelley Peterson before, also with the process that we typically go through involves people in discussion and decision-making and moving forward. So if the board's direction tonight is to move to starting full day kindergarten on the first day of school, which is August 15th, we would need to act immediately because that is right around the corner. So, we are happy to answer any questions. As you can see, we've already, in a short amount of time, done quite a bit to get as much information to this board meeting as we could.
I'd be interested to hear the input that we received from the kindergarten.
So I have the ability to personally call and appreciate the time of the staff members I was able to reach while they are on their summer vacation. The greatest concern the staff members had was the very short timeline. They shared the fact that many of them already have their schedules developed, they have back-to-school night scheduled, many of them, many teams, for the Thursday of the first week they return. So the Teacher Work Week starts on the 8th. Many of our kindergarten teams hold back-to-school night on August 11th. And so that was a concern. In addition to that, they take great care in considering their instructional schedule during the day. They, during the course of the school day, and when we are full-time, they think carefully about the cognitive load the students engage in throughout the day and plan instruction and activities so that cognitive load is shifted, not simply tacking two hours to the end of the day. If they, if that time are added, they want to ensure that it is meaningful and well-planned. And they talked about having the opportunity to engage in a collaborative discussion with their colleagues across the district in that process and planning with a lengthier timeline as was done when we shifted from that modified half-day to the full day schedule and the schedule we currently operate under. They, the six staff members that I spoke to mentioned, they highly value that six-week assessment period and had concerns with a substitute in that classroom, speaking to how important the consistency is in the staff as they begin with new kindergarten students and establishing that routine and consistency and that they spend a great deal of time and care to ensure that the children feel supported and are successful in those first six weeks.
The funding source, where is that? That's not from the general line.
You know, as part of the 2022-2023 state grant, our state budget that was approved, they have allocated additional grant funds that are able to be used for these purposes. But there's additional monies as part of this grant in order to increase instructional minutes, or additionally, we're able to tap into those to be able to reduce students/teacher ratios. So there is a block grant in the California State Budget.
And this block grant, that's one-time money?
It's one-time money, but it also carries over, we're able to, it carries over over a period of years.
Right, right. It's always, while you're pulling at this, we're sacrificing something else. What are we sacrificing that we're not paying for out of this grant now, in order to do this?
And we haven't had conversations yet about how to direct that one, but that would be a potential source of revenue if we were to choose part of this grant money.
I was wondering, I think you more about. Yeah.
Yes, it's newly added to the budget, so we haven't developed a plan yet. There are a number of allowable uses, and two of those are the increase or stabilizing instructional learning time or increasing or stabilizing staff-to-people ratios. There's some other things around closing learning gaps and people supports that could also be used, but it has sort of a variety of potential uses.
So, I don't know if I can think of this probably, but is this, this is one-time money? Is this something that we've already used previously before in the past, or is this?
No, this is a new block grant, part of the new budget, and so there are a couple of new funding sources that'll be one-time sources. Most of them are somewhere in the range of two to four years of a timeframe through which we can use them.
So if we're gonna move forward, then this, maybe this grant is the one that we use to pay for this?
This was, this would be the funding source that would directly align with adding the substitutes to the classrooms.
But the concept is that we would use this coming year as a template for years in the future, so we have substitutes next year, and the year after, and the year after, and the year after, and we're looking at using one-time money to pay for this ongoing program? Am I wrong?
Well, I can't, I think Shelley speaks to the concept.
I don't know that that is necessarily the case. What I heard was strongly expressed is, this is not the way we do business as a district. This is not the way we come together and collaboratively look for a solution. So it is the solution we have proposed because of this very, very short timeline. Every teacher I spoke to expressed a desire, and I have to commend them for their professionalism and their willingness to come together, wanting to have a dialogue and troubleshoot, problem-solve, think about how we get there, but that, really not having that opportunity with this very short timeline. We had a conversation, I had a conversation with all of them regarding the state's direction, the Senate bill and the Assembly bill, one making kindergarten compulsory and one making kindergarten requiring full-day programs. So, they're very understanding of that, and they also highly value that opportunity to, have the opportunity to work with their children, to get to know them, so that they can plan construction accordingly. So to say that we would rely on that year after year after year, I can't say that that's the fact because we haven't had an opportunity to work with our kindergarten teachers. This is the solution, the proposal we have arrived at according to this very short timeline.
Can you sound on a little bit on those Senate bills, the legislation you're talking about?
So, I can't. There is an Assembly bill brought forward that, I believe it's the Assembly bill, that would make kindergarten compulsory. I believe that would go into effect in the 25, 26 school year. And then the other is a state/Senate bill, which would require every LEA provide full day kindergarten, they could provide a half-day option, so long as full day was an option for all.
And those are still working their way through right now, they're not?
They are. They have so far received bipartisan support.
Okay. And when, did you mention when are those coming to effect, if they were to pass?
The one is 25, 26. I believe that's the compulsory, and I don't have the exact date that it would go into effect for the full-day program.
Okay, but potentially, right, this is something that maybe the legislature down the road is suggesting?
I think that it's inevitable. It is, it's no secret that the state's priority is early childhood education. And I think that is a valid and very, very important priority, as do all of our kindergarten teachers. And that I anticipate that both the Assembly bill and the Senate bill will likely pass. That also was part of my conversation, that this is coming, to which no one objected. It is that they report for work on Monday, and families and children report on the 15th. And this isn't our typical process nor timeline. And so, all were very, very surprised. If you recall, in May, we were asked, could we do this? And in May, my response was, this isn't the process we typically follow. We believe in a collaborative conversation with all parties at this table so we can arrive at the best.
But I think in May, we were also talking about looking at for the following year.
That is correct.
Going through the process, negotiating with teachers, figuring out how we can do it, because I think, I've gotten the sense that we're all in favor of this, but doing it now is just, it's too quick, too soon, too, you haven't had a chance to pull in all the details and do you need to do this. I find it very, it's just, it's just throwing it all in and trying to, trying to get this just to do it. And I think we should take, I personally think we should just take our time and get it done next year and do it right, rather than trying to slap something together this year. I mean, that's kind of where I'm, my thoughts are. I value the full-day kindergarten, adding the extra six weeks. You know, at this point, what are they gonna do, you know, more just playtime or something at the end of that, just what, you know, essentially, it's the, what they're in, an half-day, you know, care is probably what it's gonna end up in. And I don't think that's a good use of our substitutes' time. So I just don't know if that, if, I just think it's too quick, and try to slap it together in a week. With teachers, kind of like you said, teachers come back on Monday. So, I value it, I think it's too quick.
We started when we shifted from our previous schedule. We started conversations in December 2014. I started meeting with kindergarten teams and met with them throughout the winter for a plan to implement in fall 2015. And we arrived at what we believed was a very good place at that time, but it was through all of the conversations I had with every single kindergarten team in the district. And I believe that we arrived at the best solution when we have the opportunity to go through that process together. And, and I also agree with board member Fitzpatrick in that early education is highly valuable and children do deserve to be in school for the length of the instructional day. So I think we can accomplish both. We just haven't had the time to arrive at the best way to do that.
How much time do you think you'll need to properly go through the process?
I would begin this process again in December.
And do you think it's something that could be achieved maybe in the current year for the next school year?
I believe so.
So my questions are, what outreach have we done, if any, asking the other stakeholders' parents what they want?
Given the short timeline, I have not had the opportunity to do that, and we are incredibly involved in getting the school year up and running for our current kindergarten through sixth-grade students.
So I'm asking about what proactive outreach we've done, not because I brought this up as a topic.
I haven't done proactive outreach because this topic was brought in May. At that time, I did not reach out to parents because, I'm giving my explanation, I did not reach out to parents. I have it on my, I had it on my calendar based on that board meeting to do that in September. I believe that reaching out to parents prior to the start of school would send a confusing message regarding, is it for this school year, the 22, 23, or the 23, 24 school year? And in May, we did not receive direction to implement a full-day program for 180 days for the 22, 23 school year. So that's why it was not done.
Okay. I just, I know the value of early education as much as I do. I would like to see this district being more proactive about things like this, rather than me having to bring it up to your attention. You know, these Senate bills and Assembly bills are coming down. You know that there's TK that's expanded all over the state. What are we doing to engage parents and families now? For example, about TK, what question have we asked families about transitional kindergarten? If they want that in the school district, they want to use their tax dollars for that? You know, I mean, I'm happy to bring this stuff up, but I'd like to see it coming from you guys, too.
Understood.
But my other question is, you know, to piggyback off what Scott mentioned, the additional two hours that teachers would need to plan for, for these six weeks, maybe it's like, you know, there's just a substitute. It looks like you're using a substitute for the full day. So I guess there's not an option to use like a half-day partially substitute. I don't know how that works. And so, my question is also, what are these kids doing at 12:30 when the bell rings and they go where? They go, you know, you mentioned the cognitive load, like, okay, so what's happening to them?
I would be happy to include that in a survey to gather more information from our families about what the majority of our children do, or all of our children do at the conclusion of the school date during the first six weeks of school. I can't answer that. I haven't, I don't have data to.
I can answer. I don't know. How many kids go where at this point? We don't have that information?
I do not. We have a small member that attend our after-school program, but I do not have accurate data about how many go home, how many might go into private care, how many might go into private preschool, how many go home to one member of the family who is not working a typical workday off-site. So I would have to inquire about that to bring forward accurate data, otherwise it would just be my best guess.
Okay. Other ones have questions?
I have, I guess, a comment. It's just, I have a lot of questions that I wrote down, and there are a lot of my comments that, I think if there's so many questions that I have about this right now, it's probably not the best time and thing to go forward with it right now, because it doesn't really seem to me to be. I mean, like, I have a bunch of questions, like, you know, what does it actually look like? Is it full-day substitute there? Is it a substitute that's kind of, that comes in immediately afterwards, once the half-day ends, so then the substitute can teach, and then the regular classroom teacher going to do assessments? Is that gonna be, how's that gonna affect consistency that you're kind of discussing? You know, do kids need this time to rest? It's something that kindergartners are able to adjust to immediately, or is those six weeks a good period for them to kind of ramp up and get used to the school system? You know, I have a lot of different questions that I have, and more than that, but for me, basically, if I'm having this many questions this time, I think it's something that probably is a better idea to kind of bring back later in the year so that they can kind of flesh out the program a little bit better with the teachers, more teachers, because it sounds like Shelley was able to talk to six out of, I'm assuming, 21 classrooms. So, you know, it might be a better idea to kind of have a little bit more time, go flush out a little bit better, work out the teams, and hopefully this will be something that can be done by next year, because it doesn't look best kind of the direction it's headed. So, it's kind of my thoughts.
Well, I appreciate Kevin's input because he's gotten responses from his people, and it doesn't sound like they're completely on board. Well, let me rephrase it. I think it sounds like everybody is completely on board, but not everybody is completely on board doing it in a way where you're running around with a hair on fire. And frankly, having been on the board since 2010, that is not the way that our district does things. We don't do it in a way that is not planned out and is not polished. I'm not saying that if it did go forward, that would be the way that it's done, but what I am saying is that I don't want to not know where the problems might lie. And we can end up going forward only to find that we, you know, have stepped in something that we didn't really expect. And I want to make sure that we look behind every corner and every crevice in putting this thing together. I think if this was a new program and it was newly put upon the community that they didn't expect it to come, that maybe that would be a different situation, but this is the way things have been for many years at this point. I don't think there's anybody putting their kids in kindergarten that isn't expecting it to be six weeks and then followed by the remainder of the year. I'm not saying that it makes that easier for it to go down at all, because I'm sure the parents have a difficult time. But it's not as if we're changing it at this point. We're looking to change it in another direction. I just don't want to do that in a way that comes off half-cocked, if you know what I mean. So, I think I agree with where Scott's mind is. I understand Catherine's frustration that we don't know what the community feels, because I feel that as well. I can imagine having gone through school with three kids at different levels and having some kids here and some kids there, and some kids not in school and some kids in school. I imagine the logistics of that is extremely difficult, but as I said, this is not a new situation for them, and everybody's had an opportunity to plan for that going forward for the last number of years. If it was, then maybe I'd have a different way of looking at this. But we're looking to get rid of that problem, and I don't want to get rid of the problem only to create more problems. So that's just my thinking.
Thanks, Darin. Can I?
Go ahead.
Just to add on, first of all, I really appreciate the district and Kevin reaching out to the teachers and trying to get some really quick input on this. And so, we take our teachers' opinions very seriously. They're the ones who run the program. And so, you know, I think the view. And so, um, you know, I think the, the feedback from them is clear about, um, positive inclination to do the program, but the desire to have thoughtful, uh, planning. I'm, I'm hearing the same thing from the majority of the board and, and general direction to, uh, go ahead and start planning for next year to have a full-day kindergarten and go through the usual process to get, uh, input from the teachers' parents and all the other stakeholders that might be affected by this. So that's what I'm hearing from the board. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, let that, make a motion to have that voted on that that actually happens for this year.
Uh, well, this is not on the agenda for board action, but we've just.
Right, so however that needs to happen, so that.
No, 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 no. No, we just give direction.
We, we, standard practice for us is to give direction. And we've, you know, all give a direction. We have unanimous agreement that the direction from the board, as with many, they give direction on is to proceed with, um, this full-day kindergarten, um, plan for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. So I don't, let me just ask, um, Holly, is there anything else you need from the board or to, um, the board direction in order to proceed?
Not at this time, and it will help us to, to have that. That way, we can go through the process this year as we would want to to make sure that we have all of the right people involved, get all of the input that we would need and want in order to come back to you with what our recommendation is.
And, and if I could, um, Catherine touched on it a little bit. I, I think part of that direction, or whatever your research is gonna be, is to find a place where these kids could spend the rest of their day. Uh, if, if that half-day is gonna end at twelve-thirty, maybe we can find some program or something, create something where these kids don't have, or these parents don't have to worry, or at least make that part of our plan, that we have some fills up at that time so that the teachers have their opportunities to do whatever they need to do. I, I'm just brainstorming here, but I'm sure you'll come up with some ideas there.
It'd be good to have the, the time to explore what the, what the opportunities are for us and the different options that we have. And people will maybe come up with different ideas that are just as good and not better, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, we arrived at item five-point-one, adjournment into closed session. Board will meet in closed session if there's any other following matters. Six-point-one, conference legal counsel pending litigation, government code, section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine, D-one. One matter, as is as of the time on the agenda. Six-point-two, conference legal counsel pending litigation, government code, section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine, D-one. One matter, as of the time on the agenda. The board now adjourns to closed session at eight oh one, yeah. Okay, um, here at seven-point-one, recommitment of the session. You're recommitting of the session at nine oh four PM. Seven-point-two, report of action taken in closed session. The governing board then adjourns to closed session and no action is taken. In point one, adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Is there a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed, meeting is adjourned.